Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
I'll make it.
All right, second by Mr. Shoemaker. Both must need alibis. Okay, okay. All in favor of the agenda is presented. It's approved on a four vote, four oh vote, if the clerk would note that Mr. Glavin is absent. Mr. Guines and Mr. Lawrence are both out of the room. I believe they may still be on the premises. All right, that brings us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, three in a row?
No report.
Outstanding. We call that a trend now, don't we? All right, any counsel reports? Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery?
No report.
Mr. Shoemaker?
And I have nothing. It brings us to public comments. We'll set aside three minutes for forty-five minutes.
Now, we're not going to set aside forty-five minutes. We'll, we'll do three minutes if somebody has to, has a comment or wants to address the counsel. Anybody in the room wish to address the counsel at this time? All right, there being nobody, well, there being no one, we'll move to the policy agenda. And I, I believe we finished with the police department last time. I, I think, I, I think surely you just, and that brings us to the fire department. Chief Geiser. And Mr. Lawrence is now in the room. Gotcha. All right, we, you need first aid. We have the fire chief right here.
I got a whole paramedic sitting back here, so he's.
They're trained professionals. Okay. All right, Chief, is, is there anything you wish to say? Any introductory comments or anything, or just here for questions, or?
Here for questions, yes.
Just here, okay. Mr. Lawrence, any, any questions you might have for the chief?
Yes, uh, how many full-time employees you have? Full-time employees that work every day, whether it's on the fire trucks, emergency thing, whatever you use them for?
Uh, everybody, including office and mechanic staff, I think it is one eighty-three or one eighty-four, one eighty-three?
One eighty-three?
Yes, sir.
Full-time employee. You don't have part-time people, do you?
Yes, sir.
Do you use any contract services at all? The contractual service that we've been dealing with?
Yes, yeah, we, I. Is he talking about contractual services like contracted, like our medical, or are you talking about?
There's anything that causes those extra money that's outside of what your normal employees would do?
No, no.
So you don't have any, you know, because that's been a big expense for all this budget here and them services. So we just kind of see where we at, how much money we spending, what we can do about cut. Anyway, do you have anybody leaving? Always have these retiring or just left for any other reason?
Um, yes, sir. So we just, well, we just filled eleven positions that, you know, of course, was either due to retirement or resignation. Um, it was kind of a mix. I think it was more resignation versus retirement this time, which was a little bit different than we've been experiencing lately. Uh, some have gone to our new ambulance service. Uh, it's, it's working better. It's a better working condition. So some of our paramedics, we've lost to them. Um, and then we've lost one or two to the county, um, because of their, their pay schedule. And then some are due to retirement. We've got one, uh, that, that just turned in his paperwork that'll be retiring. So it's a mix.
So for the year, you've got pluses or minuses?
Um, right.
And more people that you hired, or you lost more people from whatever reason?
So I think total this year, we ended up hiring, what did we put, uh, nineteen total with the, these eleven? We, we put nineteen, we've hired nineteen total this year.
Okay. So how many positions do you still have vacant?
So with these eleven, um, I think current, we have zero, but one turned in his resignation. I think he falls off the books the next week or two. So we'll have one open position and then the, the other retirement, we'll have a second position um, in the next month or so.
So like all our fire trucks and fire stations are full as far as the people that you actually need working?
Yes, so with the, with the budgeted positions, we have almost a full staff currently. But now, that's eleven sitting in training. They're not filling those spots on the trucks. It takes about five, five and a half months to put them through the required training before we can put them on a, on a seat on a truck.
Well, that's eleven, is that counting the one eighty-three?
Yes, that would be included in that.
Those, okay. So you have one hundred and eighty-three, count those eleven.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No, not, not right now.
Okay. Ms. Newman, any questions? Mr. McGilvery, any questions?
Just one quick question. Uh, Lawrence pretty much answered, uh, asked all the ones I was going to ask, but you have two, two openings now.
Yes, sir. We will in about the next month. Yes, sir.
Okay. And you kind of had mixed reasons why they left. I think you said some went to the ambulance service.
Yes, sir.
Couple went to the county for, for pay issues and everything, and, and a couple retired.
Yes, sir. Some retired, some, their wife got a great opportunity out in Texas, so they, they left with them. So it's, it's a mix.
Little bit of mix.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Anything? Nothing. Um, thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
So currently you have no vacancies, fully staffed, but you have eleven new guys. They're really not going to be on the trucks uh, for another five, five or six months, and you have two expected to retire in the next?
Retire, resign. One's resigning for an opportunity, and I think Utah or somewhere out west, and then the other is a retiree. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, how would you rate the morale in the department at this time?
I'm biased, since I'm the chief. I would think it's good. Um, so, but others may say something different.
From your perspective as director, what are the significant challenges your department faces? Particularly related to budget?
Um, I mean, of course, you know, always, you know, we want a significant raise every year. Um, you know, that's, that's always a challenge. I think that will continue to be a challenge, uh, you know, for the foreseeable future, especially with the rapid inflation that everybody's experienced. Um, other is the, uh, is the training, the amount of training that our guys have to go through. Uh, currently to maintain their job, we require them to do hazardous materials awareness and ops, which is a, about a two-week, two and a half week. Then they roll right into our basic firefighter, of course, uh, which is another eight weeks or so. So we're about ten weeks in, ten and, ten and a half. And then we roll right into a, as fast as we can go, EMT basic, because that's a requirement to maintain uh, employment with us. On the fire department, all total, we're roughly about twenty weeks, twenty-one weeks of training. Um, so it's, it's quite a bit. So just like now, we've got eleven guys. They figure into the budgeted positions, but that's eleven guys that aren't on trucks until we can get, and we, we've been, in fact, we had a meeting with the, with the State Fire Academy last week. They're in a backlog. Um, they, they just can't supply the training to where we could out, you know, to where we could send the guys to the State Fire Academy. We're having to do this all in-house. So our training division is tied up with the basic remedial training, and we can't progress to more advanced a lot of times. Um, another issue, thirty-year retirement. Um, and I know that's a state level. That's not something we deal with on a city level. But, uh, thirty-year retirement is, is detrimental to some of the hiring practices that we do here. And I'm sure everybody's experienced.
If we can go back to the training just for a moment, with all the training that, that your staff is required to do, are they pulled away from their jobs for that training, or?
So that.
They're not on a truck working that day. They're in a classroom, I would assume, which, which means since you're now adequately staffed, fully staffed, if, if, if five guys are out training, then somebody's filling their spots somewhere, right? And probably being paid overtime?
Um, so, not necessarily. Um, so what we have is we have a training chief. He's actually here today. He coordinates all training. He's an eight-to-five guy. Um, and then we have two, uh, what we call field training officers per shift. So A, B, and C shift have two. Those guys work with our training chief, and as they're on shift, like for now, those guys are assigned to the eleven new guys that are, that are being trained. So they might come off, all of our training's done at Station Seven. We've got multiple rigs there. Uh, what we do is we'll take them off of those rigs. Of course, if we have a fire or any major incident, them with the new trainees, they're going to all respond, but for that time.
Yeah, so it sounds, so basically what you're saying is they report to work, they're training, but if an alarm comes in, they're on the trucks and they're rolling?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Um, how would you rate your department's level of service to citizens based on the challenges you just described? Would you, would you say the service provided by the fire department is inadequate, or challenging, or satisfactory, or outstanding?
Oh, I would say our guys doing an outstanding job.
Okay. Any thoughts on fi- I have to ask, any thoughts on Fire Station Five's renovation?
Um, yeah. Um, definitely needed. Um, you know, I, you know, I'd, I'd love to see it happen there or even in another area, in Station Five's area. Um, you know, whether we had, you know, the ability to buy a piece of land and build it to where the new pumper hall, you know, would be big enough to fit multiple units, whereas the one that we currently are in, as the trucks have gotten bigger, it's tighter in that pumper hall, so.
Okay.
I'd like to see one built to house the amount of people, because it's the busiest area, and right now we're running one truck because we made room for an ambulance. So it's a lot for those guys to do the hydrants, the inspections. They, uh, they're swamped.
And that's the second busiest fire station?
I think, I think right now it's the busiest. It, it's the first, yeah. It's, it's number one.
Um, also, I recall Resolution three ninety-seven dash twenty-four, which was June of this year. We, uh, we authorized a purchase, well, earlier we had authorized a purchase of a new fire truck, and, and it came in in June, and in there, in that resolution, we also noted that there was nine hundred and, roughly nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a little less than a million dollars, was available in the CDBG funding, um, for the payment of that truck. So my understanding is that's based on this clause, we, we approved the CDBG money for being used for that. So that was, that was, that nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand was coming out of the general fund, correct?
Note, note, a note.
It, it was a note, okay. So, so we no longer have to pay that note, correct? So, so was that nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars reallocated, or where was it real, where is that nine hundred and sixty thousand?
The nine hundred and sixty dollars in expenses was offset by a nine hundred and sixty dollar note to wash to zero, and then we would pay principal and interest over the next seven years. So there was not nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars in twenty-four's budget. It was only the principal and interest payment.
Okay. I'll take your word for it, since I'm not a CPA. Thank you. All right, I have nothing more for the chief. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, uh, how many fires actually y'all have that y'all put out roughly? Like a house burning or something burning and? I mean, normal, like for a year, you do how many, you figure?
I think over, right. Three hundred and fifty plus.
Because I know you do a lot of medical calls.
Absolutely, yes.
Right, and that, y'all do a ton of them. I know that's your biggest thing.
Yeah, we're, we're about one seventieth, one eighty calls a week. Um, you know, depends on that, the week as to whether it's fire, medical. Medical usually equates to about eighty percent of our total call volume throughout the year.
Good. And I noticed the, the fire, you get out there pretty quick to put the fire pretty quick. I mean, have we had any problem with anything? Like, we have enough equipment? We handle that with no problem? And we, I know most of the time they shut them down pretty quick, but they burn, it burned pretty fast. It looked like it was worse, but you know, when you put the water on it, it causes it back. So y'all had any major problem? That you shorted something, or you needed something else equipment, or you figured you got enough equipment to handle what we doing right now?
Uh, no, no. I think the equipment's great. Of course, more personnel always makes it safer. Um, you know, but we, uh, we make do with what we have right now. And our guys are well-trained.
Chief, might want to mention too, a little bit about the turnout gear maneuver that we did as far as replacement of, uh, a, a truck with that, instead of having two sets of gears. We talked about that in the last four, five years. But there was a ability to, to, uh, exchange right there on site as you fight a fire. Is it pretty much, you might want to explain that to?
Yeah, so, uh, years back, I think under the, uh, uh, under Chief Boni, uh, they worked with, uh, with the mayor and, and y'all, and, uh, bought fifty sets of additional turnout gear. It stays on a truck. Um, you know, I don't know if y'all are aware, but firefighters are way more prone to have cancer, especially afterwards, um, once we retire. Um, this is one of those cancer preventative type issues that we, uh, that, that y'all and mayor, uh, and the previous administration took seriously. Um, so yes, every, every fire we go to, once these guys fight fire, they don't go back into that old, older dirty gear. They get exchanged and, and, you know, come off the scene with dry, clean gear. Um, trying to prevent, because we, we have a rash of, a multitude of cancers, um, especially skin cancer in the areas that, you know, you wipe in your face, and, and lung cancer, pancreatic, it hits us all.
That's about two thousand a unit. We, we, we're actually trying to get two sets of gears. It was pretty, pretty expensive.
Oh, absolutely. To, uh, to outfit a firefighter nowadays, if it was two thousand back then, it's, um, around four thousand now. We've had a significant increase in about a five-year time span. So it's, uh, I think we just spent around sixty-nine thousand dollars on, uh, eighteen sets of gear.
Well, speaking of that, how many, say like the last year or two, how many people wanted, would cancel, or none?
Not many of our active, our active guys. Um, in fact, I don't know of any, none have brought it to our attention, um, that they are actively, you know, on duty and have cancer. Um, but I've been made aware of, I want to say approximately ten of our retired guys, and this could be guys that have been retired for ten years. But they are, uh, you know, one guy that just recently retired is, is going through another battle of, uh, of cancer that returned, and he did have it when he was on duty and then retired and going through it again.
Yeah, that's tough. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Forgive me, Chief, I have some budget questions.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking through the, uh, roughly through the end of July, so that would be three quarters of the year. And I'm rattling these down. Diana, you may help me with this. Um, the first is, uh, line item zero one five five one, which is the fire department, sixty fifty-two tuition. We'd budgeted fifty-two thousand five hundred and spent at the end of July about less than twenty percent of that. Was that going to remain the same for this next year, or?
Now, it looks like we're bringing it down to fifteen thousand.
From fifty-two to fifteen? Okay.
And we work with finance and project, you know, ask our guys how many are going to actually go to school.
Sure.
Sometimes that doesn't actually happen.
Uh, the next one is small equipment. That's, uh, sixty-two oh four.
Yes, sir.
Budgeted twenty-four thousand, twenty-four five, and spent about four thousand of that. Was that, anything, was that going to remain the same, or?
I think we're bringing it down because we had transferred out. Um, so we're bringing it down significantly in twenty twenty-five.
Don't have a figure, though. I, I don't expect you to have a, a number in mind, but?
Uh, ten thousand, it looks like, will be at twenty twenty-five.
And then, uh, sixty-two oh eight, I guess that's operational supplies, OPSUPP. And we'd budgeted three thousand. We'd spent a little over four hundred dollars. Is that going to remain at three thousand?
I think it's dropping to two, two thousand.
Okay. And sixty-two ten is repro supplies, reproduction supplies, I assume. That was two thousand, and only a little less than six hundred dollars has been expended.
Dropping it to one thousand.
To one thousand?
To one.
Okay. Then sixty-two twelve is COMP supplies?
Beer supplies, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Um, seventy bucks have been spent, fifty bucks was al, excuse me, five hundred bucks was allocated. Were you leaving it there at five hundred?
Leaving it at five hundred.
Okay. Publications was a hundred dollars, nothing spent?
Yeah, leaving it, just in case.
ID photo, five hundred bucks, nothing spent?
We're actually zeroing that out because we might be going to a, a new system that will kind of negate having that.
Okay. Uh, sixty-two eighty-two, that'd be repair parts, or, I'm assuming?
Is that, yeah, equipment, equipment, repair parts, yes.
Equipment repairs. That was budgeted seven thousand. About twenty percent of that had been spent at the end of July. Was that remaining at seven thousand?
We're bringing that to five. That's one of those where if we do have to repair a piece of equipment, it does get costly.
Okay. Tires, uh, eight thousand was budgeted, less than two thousand was spent by the end of July. Was that remaining at eight thousand?
Yes, that is one of those that some years we spend a bunch, and then some years we don't spend any. It's kind of like tires last two or three years. So we kind of took an average.
It's them big tars, ain't it?
Yes.
Okay. Batteries, eighty-three hundred. You'd spent a little less than half of that.
Yes, sir.
Are these vehicle batteries, or is?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the ones, because each fire truck has at least four.
Okay.
If not more.
Leaving that budget item the same, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Small, sixty-two ninety-four, small tools. Uh, let's see, you'd budgeted sixty-six four. You had about twenty-three thousand available at the end of July.
We're bringing that down to fifty-six four. That's another one of those accounts that fluctuates year to year.
Sure. Uh, medical fifty, uh, that's sixty-four twenty. Medical's fifty-seven thousand. We'd spent less than five hundred bucks. Was that?
Well, that's one that hits us all at one time. We, we do an annual physical in the May-June timeframe.
That's what this, the bulk of this pays for, is the physicals? Okay, so that's, you do that probably in the summer, I'm assuming?
Yes, May we'll do the blood draw, and then June we do the rest of the physical, which gets us to, uh, towards the end of the year, we'll get the bill for that one.
Okay. So I'm assuming you're leaving that figure about the same. It sounds like you have an eye, firefighters have to get a physical annually, correct?
Yes, we do a, it's what's called NFPA fifteen eighty-two.
Gotcha.
And it's pulmonary, you know, all your lung.
Pretty much a fixed cost. You know what you're going to pay for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, electric, sixty-six oh eight is electronic, ten thousand budgeted, right at six thousand expended. Was that staying the same?
Leaving it about the same.
Okay. And then machine or, excuse me, subscription of a hundred, of, excuse me, subscription for a thousand dollars. That was revised to nine hundred, and none of it was spent. Was that remaining in there?
I think so, yes. I can't remember quite offhand what that pertains to.
And the, the last item was sixty-eight hundred. I guess that's machine equipment?
Sixty-eight hundred.
You'd budgeted forty-nine thousand, expended right at seven thousand.
I don't know, let's see. Yeah, so that's one of those capital item. Um, we don't have, it fluctuates year to year, I think. Uh, twenty-one thousand, we were moving from there to pay for, uh, something in the today's agenda.
All right, so for, for next year, you leaving that figure the same, or look?
Uh, next year it's going to be twelve thousand.
From forty-nine to twelve, okay. Um, the only other two things of note, both deal with overtime. We budgeted originally, yeah, we budgeted for, um, operations in combat, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, a little over half a million dollars. And at the end of July, we had already expended eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
So, uh, and my, my guess is this is probably, no reason to believe that this is not a typical year. And I don't know, in tracking some of these costs, usually it's about a million dollars, give or take a hundred thousand every year, I think. And then overtime for fire prevention, uh, budgeted seventeen fifty, and they were a little over seven thousand dollars. Was that? I don't know if that would, this is a typical year this year or not, do you?
How much was it that we spent?
Seven thousand, roughly seventy-one, seventy-one hundred dollars.
So these guys arrive to, uh, to do the fire investigation. We've had a, a string of them on weekends.
So it's based on?
After hours.
Okay, so it's based on the investigations and when they occur?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
One question. I, I saw you had like seven grants. How many grants we have coming for this year?
Uh, only one that we have gotten this year. Now, we're still working through one, so it makes us ineligible for another. Um, so we've only received one. Um, and that was, uh, the one that we got approved on today's agenda for the, the small homeland security grant. Um, but other than that, we should be finishing up one, which will make us eligible to apply for another sometime next year.
Okay, because there's, there's a couple of pretty, pretty big grants, like that, uh?
Yes.
Professional service, a hundred and forty-two thousand.
Yes, that was the Friends of Firefighters. We were, it was a, kind of a pilot program with, uh, that FEMA awarded us. It was one that Chief Boni applied for. Um, it was kind of a mental health, um, counseling service. Uh, it was quite a bit, um, but to utilize the money, it required our guys to actually utilize the service. Well, not many guys were utilizing the service. The money is not utilized, but we're looking at other avenues to use that money before, uh, we lose the grant, you know, the grant ends.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, next we'll move to public works, and I guess we'll cover water and sewer as well.
I don't think Miller Ray's had a, had a meeting here. He, he's committed already. Uh, maybe he'll be coming at four. I want to go to Parks and Rec or Community Development?
Let's, uh, let's go to community development.
Time is at four. Don't be short by four.
All right, Mr. Lawrence. Uh, community development, any questions or comments?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll go through the same thing, like you with, uh, how many full-time people do you actually have working for you, Jerry?
I have thirty-two employees. I have two vacancies right now and two that are about to become vacant. Uh, I have exactly, and remember that the visitor center's included in what we do, but I have exactly the number of employees it takes to handle everything that we do in that department.
So you've always been having roughly thirty, two, thirty-three people. That's all you really need?
Yes, sir.
How you doing? Your inspector's in it?
Uh, actually, uh, uh, my commercial building inspector is transferring over to the engineering department. And my plan is to promote from within. I'll move the residential inspector up to take over that. I'm hoping to move a code enforcement officer up to take over the residential inspector, and we'll wind up hiring another code enforcement officer. So we have four code enforcement officers, uh, that cover the city. Now, these, these are not building inspectors or plumbing inspectors. Four code enforcement officers that cover the entire city. Each one has an assigned area, and, um, I'm, I'm losing one of those. She has a special needs child. She's going to have to go home and take care of the child. And, uh, then, um, I have a, another one, you know, I, I intend to promote one from within if everything goes the way that we plan, so.
All right, let's see. So thirty-two full-time employees, we good with that?
Yes, sir.
You don't really, you said you got some spots, you're just moving them to do that?
I, what I.
If you do that, or you go, you go, it's like the one guy left went to engineering. So you're going to be short people? You still have thirty-two left?
Uh, I have thirty-two positions.
Right.
That's the total of positions. And what I always try to do, if I can, is to promote from within if we have the expertise already in the department. But like, uh, a couple of years ago, Bill Raymond left, uh, Eric Nolan left, and for those, I had to go outside and look for people that had that special expertise. Uh, for the most part, what I do whenever I have a, uh, an opening, like in the planning department there, I go outside to bring in somebody there, and then we train them in, in that role from the ground up, so that they learn everything about the department and, and the other departments before uh, they're in line for a promotion.
And do you have any, a lot of non-contractual services? And do you have any, uh, a lot of non-contractable services, where people don't work for you but you help, to bring them in to help do stuff, or you really don't deal with that?
Well, you know, we still have, we have temps at the visitor center.
Right.
Uh, and we've made a change over there, what we did is when, uh, Yvette Mulcahy left and when, um, Joe Barron retired, we, we took their money, the total of their money, and we basically split it in half, so we would have two positions over there that pay about thirty-one thousand dollars apiece, so that we can actually try to work toward eliminating some of the temps over there, that we actually have people who have the ability to open the doors in the morning and lock the doors in the afternoon, and work on weekends and respond to burglar alarms when they go off.
So the only, uh, two places that you actually have people is in your office and then the visitor center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, uh, the girl that just left, uh, was doing the civic center, I know it do with you, that's Parks, Amanda Williams?
Uh, no, that has nothing to do with me.
Okay, that's somebody different.
Yes, sir, uh-huh.
That's, uh, Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there any money that you can save us, that you can spend, or something that we can, you know, I know we got the thing you set up with the old brick house, that's like added money?
Yes, sir. If, if you look at the, if you look at the increase on there, I think it shows like two, uh, sixty-four, and if you consider what's, what's involved in that, it's the moisture barriers at the old brick house, it's repairing the brick on the outside, uh, it, we're having to replace the audiovisual equipment in the visitor center because the one we've got in there doesn't work and it's obsolete, we can't repair it anymore, and then we did a, an increase to the gift shop, because the gift shop is doing very well, we're taking a look at the, the percentages that we're charging, uh, over there to see if maybe we need to increase the amount of profit that we're making on some of the.
That's only retail you have though, correct?
Yeah, and that money winds up coming back to the city anyway after we, we sell, but other than that, it's essentially what, uh, we asked for last year, uh, it does not involve a vehicle this year, and I do have some vehicles that are over twenty years old over there that need to be replaced, but, uh, we'll, we'll work on that.
You, you don't have that in the budget this year?
There's not a vehicle in the budget this year, no, sir.
Okay. And one last year was a, a truck or what?
We, we did get a truck last year, uh, what I need to replace this year is the, the truck that the city arborist is driving.
Wow.
Because it's, I think it's actually over twenty years old, and it's, it, it's got some small value to it, but it's just not dependable.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery?
I just got one thing, I think I know the answer to the question, the issues that you're having down at the visitor center with the homeless and stuff, that's still ongoing?
It, it is, we had a, we had a meeting about that yesterday and we met with the police department today to talk about that, what's, what's happening with the, uh, the homeless problem there is that they're essentially coming in during the day and they're staying there all day, and they're sitting on our furniture in there, which is creating a, a problem because of the smell, to be honest, the, the smell, uh, they're charging their, um, phones there at the visitor center, and so we had a talk with, uh, police department and with, uh, one of the attorneys, uh, this morning to talk about what we actually could do, we're gonna be putting up some no loitering signs on the inside, we're gonna be putting up some no smoking signs on the porch because that's also a problem, you know, the visitor center, like the other city buildings are all smoke-free, and, uh, we were having homeless come up on the porch and smoke and having, uh, visitors complain about having to walk through that smoke to, to get inside, but we are working on that.
Mayor, is there a possibility that we could ha- have some type of, um, outside security hired down there, I, I'm sure the employees probably are, uh, having some issue too, I would think.
Well, uh, yes, uh, there was a report where, uh, one of our people were assaulted by a, a homeless person there, and, you know, that's not something you expect to run into when you come to work, so, uh.
Yeah, and sitting on the porch.
Security, security would help, yes.
Councilman, I'd be, I think something that we're really seriously looking at is, is, uh, you know, especially with some, some Supreme Court decisions that have gone in our favor, the, you know, the ability to do some things with loitering and those kinds of things which would free our, you know, our folks to take more aggressive action and, you know, like, keep it from, if we do it over and over again, they'll, they'll understand this is not acceptable, so there's not specifically for that situation, but we need to clear it up and, and, uh, you know, even if we put it temporarily on a, you know, daily basis, uh, we, we could do that, but, uh, we'll, we're gonna be more, uh, I won't say aggressive, but we're gonna use what we have, the books, you know, the ordinance on the books in order to correct these situations, when, uh, they've been getting away with, things have been happening not in, in the best interest of our citizens and, and the users of our facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Schumaker.
One question, Mr. Creel, just curious, some of y'all's contractual services that y'all have to pay for, what's just an example of some of those?
Uh, we have, we have contractual services with like, uh, uh, printer companies, uh, and those kind of things where the, the printers in our department are, are leased, that's, that's some of the things that are in there.
Oh, I just noted, uh, the, uh, let's see, y'all have had a pretty big uptick in the, from the proposed to the revised, I was just curious if anything specific or if it's just, I mean, nothing?
I can't think of anything, uh, specific, um, a number of the things that you see in the budget, you know, when we start putting these budgets together in May.
Right.
A lot of this is based on a projection, you know, you take six months and multiply it by twelve months, and a lot of this comes out of that, but in, in this case, we, uh, went back and looked at areas where we had not spent, um, like right now, uh, I can tell you that we had not spent, uh, the money we normally do in tree cutting, but, uh, I went out over twenty times last week to go look at trees around town, and I can tell you that we're spending some money right now, uh, on taking down trees that really needed to come down.
That's all on contractual, obviously.
We pay for that, yes, sir. Uh, uh, we also, we also pay, um, out of professional services, that's where we pay for the temps, that's a, a high.
Okay, right.
Budget item, uh, we pay attorney fees, there are certain, uh, updates that we have to give every year to like, uh, FEMA and the CRS and stormwater management, and one of them was on the, uh, agenda today, where you probably noticed that there was an item on there about PPI, that's one of the things where we have to re-register, re-up with, uh, with FEMA every year, and so we usually have to bring in engineers to help us put that together.
For the most part, everything's been pretty much the same, just obviously things are costing more now.
Our, our department is, for the most part, is service oriented, you know, we don't have to have front-end loaders or dump trucks or anything like that, so a, a lot of ours is, uh, personnel and, uh, making sure that we've just got supplies to get us through the year and repair the buildings that we have.
Right, that's right, all right, that's all, thank you, Mr. Creel.
Uh, Mr. Guns, I know you just walked in, but.
Yeah.
You may have questions?
Yeah, I think I looked through just about everything, um, is Back Bay Mission still in your budget?
Yes, sir, that comes out of, uh, contractual services, yes, contractual, that's one of the things that Mr. Schumaker was asking about.
Okay, okay, that's all, thank you.
A few things, Mr. Creel, how would you rate the morale in your department at this point in time?
I think it's actually very good, uh, we have, we normally have very little turnover in our department, most of the people that had been there had been there for years, now a couple of years ago, we went through a period where a lot of people retired, and it's just because they had been there for, for many, many years, they retired, uh, but I think one of the things that really helps is knowing that, um, if we do have a vacancy and somebody in the department feels like they have the expertise, that they are considered for being moved up, I think that helps a lot with morale, but we, we don't have the backbiting, backstabbing, that kind of stuff in, in our department, it's just, uh, uh, I think most people think that I'm fair, you know, I always try to be fair in what we do, and, uh, that we actually, we genuinely care about each other, we, we, uh, I, I try to run it like a family, and, you know, even family members have arguments and don't agree, but I think the fact that they know that it's handled fairly and, and discreetly, I think that always contributes to morale.
Are there any significant challenges your department's facing that you can think of?
Uh, I think, uh, Chief McGilvery, uh, brought up one of them, you know, that there's some things at the visitor center that we're just gonna have to deal with at, at some point, uh, I don't think there's anything within our department that I could put my finger on and say, you know, that's something that absolutely has to be done right now, I do think though that, that, you know, because some of the historic buildings are under our department, they're expected to be maintained at a certain level, and like right now, you know, the, the visitor, the, um, the lighthouse, we're gonna have to put a new roof on the lighthouse, which I would not expect that to be a costly item, but it needs to be pressure washed, you know, 'cause it's on that north side, you get mildew that builds up, but getting, I think getting the old brick house back up to a level where people can appreciate the fact that it can be rented for weddings and receptions will at least, if we can do that, will generate enough money to maintain it, and that's what we need to try to do, is to get it to a point where there's enough money being brought in to at least offset the cost of, you know, replacing the roof at some point, or, or, uh, like right now, we, uh, one of the things there that, uh, I'm gonna, about to issue a permit, uh, a purchase order on, is the handrails that are there, if you've ever seen the handrails there, we have a significant handicap ramp, and then we also have handrails on the other side, well, those have to be, uh, scraped down and treated and repainted every so many years because of the salt water that it's exposed to, that's some of the stuff I'm trying to get done out of this year's budget, so that it won't have to come out of next year's.
Okay. How would you rate your department's level of service to, to the residents of Biloxi? Inadequate, challenging, satisfactory, or outstanding?
I think we provide excellent service to the community, uh, naturally, code enforcement, you're gonna hear, uh, some opposition to that, people, you know, if we can ever find a way to write people up and have them like it, we'll solve that problem, uh, but that's just one of those necessary evils, I guess, that we have, where if people aren't maintaining their property, we have to go out, for the most part, we have good knowledgeable people in every position that we have, they know how to talk to people, they understand that we're public servants, and it's our job to work with those people to help them walk through a very, sometimes complicated process, uh, uh, from time to time, I'll have somebody come to the door and, you know, they won't be happy about the fact that they got written up, but I'll have a conversation with them and by the time that we get through it, they're usually very appreciative that we took the time to explain to them what their options are, I think that works the same way on development projects, that, uh, people will come in, when, when I took that department over twenty-two years ago, I was surprised that, uh, when they would come in, that they'd just be told, no, you can't do that, but nobody took the time to explain to them what their options were, you know, for, for getting to yes, and what we've done over the last several years is hire good qualified people that have that communication ability to articulate to them that we can approve it the way that you're asking for it, however, if you tweak this or you revise this, then we can get it to a category where we can, we can approve it, so, uh, I, I would say that we're doing very well in that respect.
Let me add, Jared, too, to, uh, just in general, the, the spirit, I, I think Biloxi has a tremendous reputation on working with folks to make things happen, as opposed to some other places, and, uh, I think there've been a number of, uh, business people who've expressed that, so it's something to be proud of.
We hear that every day, we hear it every day, that how much people appreciate how helpful we are as they go through this process.
Thank you, let, let me ask you some questions, just, uh, about the budget, again, looking at what, what's been expended at the end of July, on item sixty-two twelve, it's computer supplies, you, uh, there was twenty-five hundred budgeted, and by the end of July, less than two hundred dollars was spent, is that figure being reduced any or do you know?
Sixty-two twelve. Sixty-two twelve, I'm showing it's actually being increased by five hundred dollars.
From twenty-five hundred to three thousand?
Okay, bear with me, I may be looking at, let me look at a more updated budget here. All right, sixty-two twelve, I'm showing, uh, we had budgeted, uh, twenty-twenty-four, uh, in twenty-twenty-four, we had budgeted fifteen hundred dollars, and we're asking for a five hundred dollar increase there, uh, a lot of this has to do with, uh, computer equipment, you know, certain things that we.
So you're budgeting two thousand next year for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And sixty-two fourteen, which is publications?
Uh, yes, sir, an increase of one thousand dollars, um, some of those publications that we, uh, that we do, or, a lot of those are for the visitor center, because we have to, we have to print out those brochures and things that we put in the visitor center, so.
What were you looking to budget for next year, for fiscal year twenty-five?
Uh, I'm showing forty-five hundred.
Okay. And uni- let's see, no, 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 sixty-two fifty, other supplies, I'm showing this current fiscal year, you'd budgeted five thousand and spent roughly about a third of that by the end of July.
Yes, sir, and all we're asking for is, uh, four thousand dollars this year for sixty-two fifty other supplies.
Gotcha. And on sixty-two sixty-two, just says materials, and you'd budgeted two thousand this year?
Yes, sir, uh, some of that is building materials.
Okay.
If you'll notice underneath there, it talks about mechanical supplies, electrical supplies, that's building materials, and, uh, for example, we've got some things at the visitor center that need to be repaired, that's, that can be done in-house, uh, we can use public works employees to do that, but we have to provide the building materials for that.
Okay, and I think, can you tell me what you're budgeting for sixty-two sixty-two materials and, for next year?
Well, we are, we are putting money in there for, to make some of those repairs, we've got some shutters at the visitor center that need to be.
Do you have, do you have an amount for that, what you're budgeting for next year?
Uh, I don't have a, a specified amount for that, no.
And mechanical and plumbing, which is sixty-two seventy-eight, do you have an amount budgeted yet for next year?
No, sir, most of that is to, uh, replace some toilets in our building that are in really bad shape.
Okay, and the only reason I mention those two is less than twenty percent of the funds had been spent by the end of July.
We had hoped that we'd be able to get that done this year, and, and we just haven't been able to because of other things that have come up.
All right, and then on item, well, I'll scratch that, we get down to advertising, which is sixty-four sixty-two, I show that this year there was ten thousand dollars budgeted and about three thousand had been spent by the end of July, so there was about seven thousand available, was, were you looking to reduce that figure in next year's budget?
I'm sorry, what was the number again, Doctor?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four sixty-two.
Advertising, yes, sir, everything we do involves advertising, and, uh, advertising costs have gone up just like everything else have, we, we have to advertise with the Sun Herald, and basically what we're having to do now is to do all that digitally, uh, because they, they keep decreasing the, the printed paper.
So you were looking to budget the same amount for next year, ten thousand?
Well, uh, I showed that we had seven thousand last year and ten thousand this year.
Okay, do you know what's gonna be budgeted for this next fiscal year? Ten thousand?
The ten thousand, yes, sir, that's what we're asking for.
Thank you. And then, um, electrical, sixty-six oh six?
We, sixty-six oh six, we have, uh, We have, uh, as part of the repairs that we're doing to the Vista Center with the audio visual equipment.
Yes, sir.
We anticipate that there's going to be some electrical done there. We also have some electrical in our building that needs to be done. And I'm certain there'll be some into old brick house.
All right. I, I show that there was 8,000 budgeted for this unit. At the end of July, about 1,800 dollars had been expended.
Again, it's just, we just didn't get to it this year.
Gotcha. All right. And then sixty-six sixteen. Sixty-six sixteen is mechanical plumbing.
Yes, sir. That's, uh, heating and air supplies.
Right. And I show that 15,000 was budgeted for this year and about a third of that had been spent by the end of July.
You're gonna, you're gonna see that increase because we've just had to replace two blowers over in our building that went out. It, it's one of those things that you just can't ever anticipate when it's going to happen.
Do you know what you'll be budgeting for mechanical plumbing, sixty-six sixteen, this next fiscal year?
Well, $12,000 is what we have in there, which is a decrease of 3,000.
Okay. And the last one is sixty-eight hundred machines, equipment, and.
Sixty-eight hundred is actually the audio visual system for the Vista Center. Uh, the majority of that is for that audio visual there. It was 48,000, uh, right at $48,000.
We're talking about sixty-eight hundred machines and equipment?
Sixty-eight hundred, yes, sir.
All right. I show that originally it was budged for this current fiscal year, 4,400, but it'd been revised to 1,400.
We, we thought that we would be able to repair the existing system that was in there.
Okay.
And when it was evaluated, uh, we were told that, uh, not only could they not repair it, they can't even get parts for it anymore. So it's just going to have to be completely replaced.
Any thoughts on the audio and the, at the council meetings? Just kidding. Thank you. Any other?
Both are going to pick that.
What?
Twenty-nine.
All right. Okay. That, that's all I have. I don't think anybody else has. Uh, Mr. McGilvery had another question.
Just one question and, and I, there's in, in this machinery equipment or maybe one of the other departments there, are there, are there security cameras for the Vista Center too?
Yes, sir, there is. Uh, we had actually put in some because we need some security cameras that will actually, uh, monitor the pavilion over there. And there's also a couple of blind spots in the Vista Center that's not being picked up by the cameras that we have there right now. So yes, sir, there is money in there for that.
Okay. Jerry, I, forgive me, I do have one other question. Sound like Columbo. I don't mean to, but.
Okay.
And I don't know if you can answer this question. It may be the mayor, Diana, would be better served. Uh, for contractual services, this, this current year, fiscal year twenty-four, we originally budgeted 460,000. That was revised to 444,000. And now it's being bumped up to 600 for fiscal, for next fiscal year. 670,000, which is an additional 230,000? I'm sorry. I'm looking at contractual services under community development. That's.
Other contractual services? I'm only showing other contractual services at 47,850. Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at the department budget with the major headings under contractual services. The current year, right now, it was revised to 444,000, but, and I think maybe Mr. Shoemaker had first mentioned this, but it's jumped to 670,000.
That's further repairs at the old brick house that Jerry mentioned earlier.
Okay, that's what that, okay. That's.
I have a question.
That's the only, that's the only, that's the only item that accounts for that increase? Go ahead, George.
On, uh, the tree cutting service with the 110,000, did you spend a lot of it last year? Cause we dropped it to 80 this year.
Well, I think what happened is after we hired Zach, he didn't understand a lot about having to cut the bus routes and the, and, and making sure that the certain routes were trimmed for the fire department to get through. Uh, I think it partly was kind of insecurity on his part about what he had the authority to do. He and I had a conversation about that. And, you know, although we're not going out and just cutting trees that don't need to be cut, uh, those things are expected every year is to trim up the limbs to make sure that, that buses are not scratched and that our fire trucks don't get damaged by low hanging limbs. We depend some on CTA to help report that to us, you know, about where they're running into routes there. But I think this next year, you're going to see that we're, we'll, we'll spend more than we've spent so far this year. Uh, but we'll probably come back when he gets his feet on the ground, you know, as those requirements increase. So. I can tell you, we don't spend money in our department if we don't have to.
No, I'm just saying, well, we're dropping it 30,000. That's what I thought was struggling. We were dropping it 30,000.
I, I think that was.
The roads have got to be 14 feet for the fire trucks to get underneath it.
That's correct.
A lot of stuff they have to do automatically, you know?
Yes, sir.
But I'm just saying, I know we, you and I, and you, not me, you said you had five or six phone calls the other day about trees.
Yeah. One of them was from you. Yeah.
Well, two of them. We went out there and looked at it. But I'm just saying, so.
What we'll do, if we'll, we'll use that money that's in there, Mr. Lawrence. And if for whatever reason we run out, then we'll either transfer some money or we'll come to the council for a budget amendment. We'll do it that way.
So last year, him coming in knew you didn't spend the money.
I think that had a lot to do with it. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Uh, we'll go to Parks and Recreation next. And I suspect this may be as far as we get today, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Thank you, Jamie, for filling in.
Sir.
All right. Um, Mr. Lawrence, any questions?
Yeah, I do. I need to make sure I get this updated. On Miramore Park, I know we signed in to get the fence put up, so that's already in place. And I know we allotted so much money for, uh, new swing sets and tables and everything. Do we have the money set up to pay for that and where's the money coming from?
That's a little, I, I think we've got $75,000 in, in the budget as part of the seven million dollar bond to put, uh, you know, probably 160,000 dollars worth in equipments and, and things into each one of these parks. Diane's passing out a little matrix. It's not complete, uh, but it gives you the things that are in place at each one of these seventeen, eighteen parks, Jamie? Yeah. Anyway, bottom line is, uh, I think Miramore is, uh, is about 75,000, uh, worth of, uh, swings, picnic tables, benches.
So do we, we have that allotted? We, oh, you have to, what, you got to bid that out or you get quotes or what?
Well, she's got quotes on, on most of them. I mean, you got most of the equipment and you can buy it on whatever contractual situation we got. Whatever, however, we need to buy it, we'll buy it.
All right. And now you said about that, but, uh, that's in the interstate underneath that, which is that the parks. The interstate we were talking about earlier at the meeting. So we had.
The maintenance underneath those parks, we were talking about, by the pickleball park.
The gate that had fallen down?
Right.
Yeah. Um, the director told me she was going by there to inspect that as well to look and see what needed to be done with it.
So we have money for that to have that put back together? I think the fence was down and the gate's open.
Right. And I, I don't know, councilman, I, I would have to look at the extent of the damage.
I mean, we've got some miscellaneous stuff that we can use to fix those, you know, components. I mean, things break, you got to fix.
Right. I mean, some that we just need to get done, to straighten it up.
Right.
And then the other thing we, we talked about, the, the pad, on the splash pad on the point.
Right. I think there was a very special surface, I think, that you were trying to get some quotes on for, uh, you talking about at, at, uh.
Right, at the splash pad.
Yeah, splash pad.
Splash pad.
Yes, sir.
So, so we actually have the money, we just got to get the quotes to get the prices and see what is going on in place.
Allocated, a part of that twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three bond was about 7 million for recreation. Of course, A.J. Holloway was a big part of that. And, uh, then the, the other things that we mentioned, we'll give you a matrix and update all those things that, that's in place right now. We're going to be adding to it to the tune of about 160,000. Uh, example, on, on the, uh, uh, point cadet on the pavilion, I think we, we had three. And they should be called big ass fans, right? They're called big fans.
Yes, sir.
We get two of them broke, okay? That's 10,000 a hit. That's sort of the things that we'll be listing.
So we get ready to get this stuff done. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
We, we have the money, we just have to get it done. But I mean, that's a, Miramore, that's Highway ninety, one of the splash pad on the end.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's, those are big. There are a lot of people go down it. So I mean, those things need to be taken care of along with a lot of other stuff. Don't, uh, you're talking about the, the ball field. Have you spent more than you allowed us to fix up the ball field?
About 98% finished with, with the tennis courts and, and the ball field. Is that pretty right?
Yes, sir.
So you, is that going to be right at 5 million like it was roughly the total amount to take care of the hollow, the complex?
Yeah, about 5.1, what, 5.2? Christie, I think 5.1, 5.2, A.J. Holloway, about 5.2.
Okay. So we have enough money to take, and we'll finish that.
Yeah.
And that should happen pretty quick.
I think we're in the middle. We actually were able to kind of work it out with the deducts and so forth to, uh, put about a half a million dollars into resurfacing, uh, a parking lot that was used as a, as a, uh, an, an area to, to do the dirt. So you're going to get a brand new surface there.
Okay. We had a problem a couple of weeks ago. I didn't realize that underneath the interstate on the point. And, uh, Sherry called, I think, the port director between them two, they went and cleaned it up. So who actually?
Golden Nugget had some opportunity to do that too. So I mean, so.
So that's, is that still three ways or we got, we own a third of it?
We own a third of it.
And then there's the other, just takes the other two thirds. But, but it broke up. It used to be IHL interstate and city. That was how it was set up. So we own a third of it? Do we actually has it designated what we own?
No.
It's just part of that. Okay. So, but you said about the Golden Nugget, so all of us together should maintain it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would just want to make sure we check these parks. They got that money that's allocated. Get that thing under the interstate picks, you know, try to stop them from going there. Cause these are great problems. They had, y'all had to go clean all of it up the other day. That was the worst thing. Then the gate was open was bad, but if they're going there and just trash everything.
Well, you know, we put significant money, even though it should have been one-third of our significant money, uh, in, in redoing the bulkheads and redoing, you know, even some of the fence that we, uh, it should have been replaced. But I mean, we, it's, it's, uh, it's in, in good shape with regard to the structure of that, uh, that piece of property. But it's certainly an opportunity that, uh, that is missed without the cooperation of, uh, those, uh, our two partners.
On, uh, the Hornsby Park is, the fire department was taking care of it on that, uh, moment before.
Lions Club, Seacoal Park, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean.
We're looking to do some, uh, some plants, trees there, uh, on that park. I'm not sure exactly, uh, what maintenance we do, Jamie, on that park.
Right, um.
That's what I'm doing, Benak, yeah.
Right, yes, sir. By, um.
And this little sheet you just gave us, what did these, uh, handwritten thing, the water fountain benches? What does that supposed to mean? You put them in there?
Yeah, that's something to be added. That's where things are going to be added from this list. That's, that's the column that should go in. Come in a little abstract, yeah. Didn't get a clean copy, but I'll have that for you.
I was just checking because you asked, somebody just put that in there.
That was me.
Glad to see you. That's good for you. Glad to. And Lighthouse Park, we took the benches and that up, we're going to put them back? The seats and I think it was, was like they said, we had a homeless problem. Like Ronnie said, and that park right down on Porter Avenue, that was pretty bad for a long time.
Well, uh, let me, let me repeat that, you know, talking about where we are with regard to what's on the books as far as lardering and, and that sort of thing. We're going to press that issue. Okay?
All right.
And, you know, if we get sued, we get sued. But we're going to press that issue.
Well, I know the Savannah Park that we put everything together, that, that park was great.
It does.
And we put all the new equipment.
New fences too, you know.
Yeah, some say. So that, that thing turned out great. And then watching them kids play on it during the summer, that was, that was, it made it better. They had that many people back down there to these, uh, neighborhood ballparks. To me, I think it's better than going to a complex. That's just my opinion, you know? All right, thank you.
Mr. Guines?
All right. I really don't have a whole lot. Um, um, the workforce development group is doing a pretty good job of keeping up Henry Beck Park. Also Bush Park. Now they're working on Bush Park. So they're doing a good job, um, by us allocating financing. Uh, the only thing that I, I think that comes to mind is the Bush Park. That pavilion keeps blowing off from time to time. We may want to look at an innovative way to put that shade structure, put some type of metal shade structure or something up because it, it tears every year.
You're talking about the shade structure over the playground?
On the playground, yes. So I'm a little worried about that because every year we, we go through that all the time. So there may be a way we can come up with something or maybe even get the workforce development to just look at an innovative way of putting up something, uh, in that area. And of course, uh, I want to catch Mike Leonard after the, um, after we have this session. Uh, the fencing, um, that safety issue fencing, just wanted to chat with you about that. Yes, yes. Right, can't be beat, just kind of go over it with you, how we're going to, uh, make that happen. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you for this form. It's very informative, Mayor.
Well, we're trying to hit it up to date. Those X's mean is one, and, and that was just our little collective way of getting an inventory. In the old days, there was, uh, some mechanism, even though you, you have these facilities that it might be spread. I mean, the idea, if you, let me digress a little bit, was to figure out the usefulness of these pieces of equipment. You have assigned a value to each one of these pieces, whether it's a swing set or whether it's a bench or whether it's, you know, those kinds of things. And you can kind of get a, a budgeting picture on the usefulness of these pieces of equipment, whether it's a monkey bar. Uh, so that was the intent of doing this. Uh, but now, you know, from a budget standpoint, and, uh, you know, what do we think we need in these, in these different spaces? We got seventeen, eighteen of them. So I mean, that, that's sort of an ongoing kind of thing that we're going to, you know, put the pencil to so we can, you know, see the value of what we do, how much it, it costs, how much is used.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
Yeah, yes. I have a couple of questions. And, and this may be just my math and the way I'm looking at these sheets. But on, under parks, I guess, six, six, four, nine, other contractual services budgeted for 2025 is 175,000. But if I look at this other form, I don't know, summary, I guess, one of the first pages. I don't know if you can, it says down here, it's, it's Parks and Recreation is at the bottom. It says supplies, service charges and contractual. 1,564, 435. But if you deduct, if I went back and looked and I deducted the contractual services, again, my math could be wrong, 458,985. But I'm just wondering if, what the difference in the two numbers are, because. Yes. It's every.
Every number that starts with six, six.
Right, okay.
Is a contract type account.
Okay, okay. So all that will be included?
Whole column right there makes up every six, six number.
Well, that then, I appreciate that because that answers all my questions I had. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Easy enough, thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker, let me, excuse me, let me go to this chart that was prepared. I see X's and I see numbers, one, two, three, four, twelve. So, okay, all right, so this is, all right, so this is a count on each of these items. How many park signs, how many flag poles, how many parking lots? Gotcha, okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you. Next thing, how many, how many vacancies do you currently have in your department?
I don't know the exact number, but I do know we have quite a few, especially in the aquatic side. You know, we're, we're looking at losing another employee in September due to retirement. So we're gonna have a issue going forward with the aquatics portion. I do know we are down quite a few employees on the Parks Maintenance side as well, the ones who are kind of taking care of the north side as well as the complex.
And that was Park Maintenance?
Parks Maintenance, yes, sir. And that's, um, four sixteen, four-two-one, I'm sorry, four-two-one.
All right. So would you say roughly, you have more than five vacancies?
In the whole department?
Right now, in the whole department, more than ten?
I would say we're probably pretty close to ten.
All right.
Would you full-time employees, you have working now, full-time people?
Yes, sir.
How many you have working now?
Full-time?
Full-time.
Think we have somewhere around sixty-something now, working, within all the divisions.
Do you have a sixty?
Sixty-one. Okay, so it's probably less than sixty, it's probably fifty-five, fifty-six.
That you have working right now?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, just, just trying to get that number, the time over there, so fifty-five or fifty-six? I'm not counting the people that you could do in the summer, 'cause y'all have a lot of temps, you know?
We do, yes, sir, and we do, we do actually have six, six budgeted part-times in the Aquatics section and two budgeted part-times in the Recreation Management section. So we have eight part-time employees.
All right, okay.
Okay, so you have about sixty-one in the department and roughly ten vacancies, give or take?
Roughly, give or take, yes, sir.
So of the sixty, of the roughly fifty-one employees, can you name them all? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, we need a little levity here, it's been a long day. How would you rate the morale in your department?
I think it's mixed. I think some divisions, of course, are better than the others. I think we're seeing a lower morale in the divisions that we're having lots of vacancies in, because, you know, we're having to provide, continue to provide services, whether it be with the pools, keeping them open, whether it be keeping up with our daily duties of grass cutting and, you know, trying to put a lot more on fewer employees to get that done.
Well, on aquatics, it's been a challenge to find certified lifeguards for years and years and years. It sounds like that's not getting any better.
It's, it's, it's the worst I've seen it in my entire life, being in, in the aquatics.
Okay.
Industry.
And on Park Maintenance, what, what do you think, why do you think you're losing people there? I mean.
You know, I think, you know, with, with what you have going on in the Parks Maintenance side with the complex, with those ball fields that we are trying to keep pristine, and I just think it takes a special person with knowledge to come out and do that, to, to keep those ball fields the way they need to be kept. And I just, we're not getting the, we're not getting the caliper of applicants that we need to get to work out at that facility right now.
Okay. You'd mentioned, my next question dealt with significant challenges, but I think I kind of have the picture.
Sure, yes, sir.
On that. What about the, how would you rate the level of service to the residents in the city of Biloxi that the Parks and Recreation Department provides? Doing a good job, great job, satisfactory job, or we have to do better, or?
I think it's satisfactory with the chance to be outstanding.
Okay.
I think once we get the people we need, and hopefully we will, I think we will be able to, to really, you know, improve in the areas we need to improve on.
Okay. I gotta ask this question, the fitness equipment at Pennzoil, any idea when it's gonna be delivered?
That is, that is in the list too, that, that the mayor has.
Okay.
I'm curious, how many members of the council have been in the Natorium?
The Natorium, when, in the past year or the?
Well, recently, or, I mean.
Yeah, I've, I've been in a couple, a couple of times in the last year.
I profess that I was here several years before I actually knew where it was. It is a real jewel.
Oh, it is.
I mean, we're the only people on the coast that has something like that.
Right, it was, it was a partnership between the city and the school district, probably forty years ago, about forty years ago. And at times, there have been some challenges, but it's, it's a terrific facility. I mean, it, it really is, there's nothing like it on the coast, you're, you're right about that, Mike. If you've not been, you should go take a look at it.
Absolutely.
They even have heaters when it's cold, so you can get toasted, not freeze, getting to a tell.
Y'all still host the Special Night Olympics there every year too, don't you?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Jamie, I wanna, I don't, you may need some help on this, maybe the administration can help you. On training supplies, sixty-two twenty-eight training supplies?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm looking at the end of July. Three thousand dollars was budgeted in this current fiscal year, and about four hundred dollars was spent. Is that gonna be reduced in the fiscal year twenty-five budget?
No, sir, actually, we just did make a big chunk out of that ordering, ordering items.
Right, we, we still have about, what, six weeks or so?
Right.
To the end of the fiscal year. Chemicals is always a big item with the pools, and budgeted this year fifty-five thousand, I'm assuming it's gonna be around that figure?
It is, and I'm sure you're questioning about a little bit of the excess in there. And, you know, some of these items, like chemicals, landscape, you know, we have to keep in mind that our sports complex was down, or has been down. You know, with new grass, new turf being put down, so a lot of those items that we buy, fertilizer, insecticide, you know, we have, we do have a little bit of an excess in those lines, just due to the fact that
Sure.
that, that those areas haven't been needing the attention that they usually do.
Right, good point. I'm not sure what finishing involves, it's line item sixty-two seventy-six.
I believe finishing, your finishing supplies, your painting, your paints, different things like that. You know, we, we do some, some painting in different areas. We were fortunate enough to have the complex, you know, the entire thing painted, cleaned and painted. You know, in the future, we're hoping to be able to go do some touch-ups that we may need to do in different areas with the finishing supplies.
Okay, a couple of other items, one is line item sixty-six oh-two, sixty-six zero-two, it's titled Buildings.
Yes, sir.
And we'd budgeted forty thousand at the end of July, we'd spend a little over six thousand on that. Was that gonna be reduced in next year's budget?
I wanna, I wanna say that the majority of that was put in there was to paint the inside of the Snyder Center.
Okay.
And it was something that we did not get around to this budget year, and don't think we will be able to get to it. Of course, that's a, you know, a company coming in to do that.
Right. Do, do we know what's budgeted, Diana, would you know? What's your show being budgeted for sixty-six oh-two Buildings? Forty, that's what it was this year, it'd be forty again next year as well. Okay, and I know the Snyder Center has needed some painting for a while, for a number of years.
Yes, sir.
The next item, sixty-six oh-five, I'm not sure what this is, FAC dash P and R?
Those are facilities mainly dealing with Parks and Recreation. We have two separate jobs that we are looking at budgeting. One was the replacement of the roofing at the Natorium over the mechanical room. When we had a contractor out there, they said it's something that needs to be done immediately. That was thirty thousand, I believe of that, and we put in another fifty. I can't think of it off the top of my head, what it was for, I think I have it written down in my notes here somewhere.
Well, it's, it's just, for this particular item, it just seems like if, if these facilities are in need of repair, that we would expend these dollars early in the fiscal year and get them taken care of. Maybe that's something we can strive for in the future, rather, rather than finish the year and still have money set aside for repairs of facilities, but they just, we just didn't get to it. If they're bid items, we ought to just be bidding them right after the fiscal year starts and, and trying to get the work done and out of the way. On item sixty-six ninety is styled Membership.
Yes, sir.
And we'd originally budgeted twelve thousand for that in this current fiscal year, but that was revised to a little over twenty-six hundred, almost twenty-seven hundred dollars. But very little of that was expended, less than two hundred dollars. Of course, it could be these memberships are renewed in August, for all I know.
And, and I do know that we were not responsible for a, or any baseball, Little League baseball, for this season, due to us joining a new organization. But however, going forward, this next, this next fiscal year, we will be responsible for those fees for memberships and dues for that.
So those memberships then are associated with whatever sports to be affiliated for them, okay?
Correct, yes, sir.
The, the only, these last four items all deal with overtime for Parks and Recreation Beautification, that's sixty-fourteen. Thirty-five thousand was budgeted, and thirty-two thousand was expended at the end of July, leaving a balance of roughly twenty-nine hundred dollars. But I'm thinking, are you gonna need to move money to cover the anticipated overtime there, or?
You know, it's, it just goes back with the personnel that we have, you know, with open positions.
Right, if you have fewer folks, you have more times working overtime.
Correct, and if, you know, if we can have a full staff, then we're thinking, hopefully, that number should be pretty close to what we need.
Right, and Parks Management was, was, there's about twenty, twenty thousand unexpended at the end of July.
Right, and that was, once again, not, not having the complex operational.
Okay, and then overtime in Recreation Management, fifteen thousand was budgeted, the end of July, they were a little under twenty-six thousand. I don't know if that's typical or not, but I'm just looking at budgeting next year, just.
I'm sorry, you said twenty-six thousand or twenty-six hundred? Fifteen, on four-three-one?
For, for Recreation Management.
Right, four-three-one, six-zero-one, four.
Four-three-one, sixty-fourteen, I show fifteen thousand budgeted this fiscal year, but twenty, roughly, almost twenty-six thousand have been expended. You know, did we need to beef that up or no, or? I, I'm just mentioning that, I know that when you're short people, usually if, there's still a job that's gotta be done, particularly in Parks and Rec, with youth activities, if somebody's not there and you gotta have somebody there, somebody's gonna get overtime, so that would, that would account for.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking in my head of all the different areas that encompass that division of four-three-one.
Right, and I just wanted it noted, it's, you don't need it explained or anything. And then overtime at the Natorium, five thousand was budgeted, but twenty-one thousand was expended. So it's just something to note in for next year's budget. Let's see if there's anything. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Did you think of what you, the fifty thousand for, you said thirty thousand was fixed the roof?
Yes, sir.
That you had in your mind?
Right, I thought I had it written down, Councilman, I don't, but it's, it's sitting on my desk.
Is one thing, the fifty thousand on?
Yes, sir. I may be able to think of it before we get done, yes, sir, but it is, it is some, an item that is in need.
Let me, let me jump out too, just talking about budgets and some of the things that you absorbed this year, that if we'd have thought a little bit more about, we did a lot of tree cutting, about twenty-something thousand, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
That was in some of your services, as well as the painting that we did after we completed most of softball and then, and so there's a significant, probably fifty, sixty thousand, I think we did, out of your budget, instead of the, the bond, okay, in, in a hurry. So that was, it could have, you know, did a little bit more expenditure without, you know, we just executed as fast as we could possibly do it.
Right, I know that the maintenance of the parks throughout the city, and it's, the, the document you handed, it's, it's real, there's, I don't see the, I don't see Holloway Park, Holloway Sports Complex listed, maybe I missed it, but, but the point is.
It's parks.
Yeah, right, the point is, there's a lot of stuff to maintain, that's gotta be maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department. And A, I don't think folks realize how many parks there are, and some, some may be a little larger than this room, but they still have to be mowed, you have to send somebody down there to.
Every, every fourteen days, I mean, that's the whole thing we're going through and experimenting on.
Right.
But you touched that, you gotta touch that at least every fourteen days, seventeen times fourteen days.
Exactly, so, so what I'm getting to is, it would be terrific if there was a maintenance schedule of the parks that was generally available to the public, because, and I, it looks like you're headed in that direction. And, and I applaud that, it's just what, whatever, whatever that plan is, once it's done, it'd be great to make it accessible to the public. And I know that you hear from folks in some parts of the city more than you hear
Sure.
from parts in the other folks, and it's, and it's a thankless job, there's always something going to be going wrong, whether it's electrical plumbing, you have public facilities that the public quite often doesn't take care of, you've got security issues, lighting, the whole nine yards.
Bathroom's the worst thing.
Right. Tell me about it, and, and it's, it's no different at the Visitor Center, for that matter, it's a public facility, people come in, they really don't, some of them don't take care of it, but, yes, Mayor?
Let me add one other thing, along with Billy Ray's here too, but we, some of the things that, as a matrix there, you know, we know we've gotta do something at those places so many times a year, some's heavy, some not heavy. Some of the things we, Dave, we talked a little bit about contractual services. Billy and, Billy Ray and I, this is a first experiment, within a week or so, we'll know, what was the name, Mike Nail, NCCI? Where he said FAR, you know, within a couple of weeks, we went from Margaret Sherry Library to, to the Abbeville Line. Those things that have never been touched as far as grass growing over, some people take their curb and take those things, you know, the, the one or two feet of grass, you know, they take the initiative, some people don't. But we're gonna get a price to do it from there to somebody, that's, it's, it's sort of the same matrix we can apply to these, these places. If we, you know, they have the horsepower, we don't have the horsepower, we got vacancies, you have six, you know, in, in the maintenance area, and you have eleven or fourteen, and some people just don't show up, okay? But if we have a reasonable contractual attack on this thing, then we can say, okay, we get two or three companies. I think they're already one of our vendors, as far as Gulf Reeds and some of these other folks that have the horsepower. So we're gonna try and apply that, you know, that, that attack, but we'll have some information, we're gonna think, what do we say? The next couple of weeks, within two weeks, he's gonna be doing this, and he's gonna finish it like he does, you know, like you would do your own yard.
Right.
So that, that's, there's a basis, you know, that's for Parks and Rec, we have the same thing in Public Works. You know, we gotta touch these things.
Right.
And how do we touch it, with the people we have, or the people we hire?
Two other things, Jamie, I want to mention. The sixty-four twenty-eight, the coaches, officials, instructors is up ten thousand, that's 'cause you didn't use that many people last year, or?
We've, we've almost expended that line through this year. And, you know, it's, like I said, would do being short, we still wanna be able to provide the services. And, you know, it's, like I said, with due being short, we still want to be able to provide the services, swim lessons, things like that. And you know, it may be a point that we do have to contract more of that out for somebody to come in and utilize our facility to teach these kids how to swim, if need be. You know, it's, it's something that we, you know, that's one thing that we, we want to continue to see is, is especially those swim lessons in the summer, to teach those kids how to swim.
And on sixty-six, forty-nine, the contractual services, you're down twenty-four thousand?
Right.
How'd you drop it, twenty-five thousand, roughly?
You know, we, we, we provided a list of all the contractual services that we use from Rachel throughout the year, whether it be grass cutting, whether it be tree, and, and some tree service, whether it be machinery, I think Director Kriel was talking about, as far as, you know, contracts with print companies, with our machines that we have in different facilities. But we did put in some extra money for last year to do some tree cutting. And so hopefully, you know, that's why that number may have dropped off a little bit going into this year, because we did get some of that tree cutting done.
Where you hurt the, the more the forest employees, the, the physical work, the labors?
Sir, I'm sorry?
It's the way you hurt the workers at the labors, actually to cut the grass, clean the parks and that.
It is, um, you know, it's, you know, we're doing okay in, in one division with our grass cutters and labors and everything. You know, one of the areas I mentioned was the aquatics, and, and that's not just a city of Biloxi problem, that's a nationwide problem. You know, the American Red Cross, who certifies our lifeguards, you know, they're, they're seeing it all over the country. And then, of course, like I mentioned before, out at the complex, you know, some, some of the, you know, maybe a little more skilled laborers that are, that are capable of, you know, putting, taking care of the ball fields, manicuring the ball fields the way they need to be. That, that seems to be where, where we're issued, so I say, maybe semi-skilled labor is, is kind of where we're, where my, my opinion is that we're lacking on.
And let me jump in, too, about that, what we did do is use a lot of artificial turf. Okay, so that's gonna impact what our load will be at those things, so we've got, you know, eight, ten fields with the-
Nine, Mayor, nine, nine, yes, sir.
But, I mean, that was all in the computation of what's, what's best for us, you know, to keep it at a, at a top level. And, uh, so, I mean, that, that's, this is gonna fluctuate, it's gonna be a, you know, understanding year, figure out what, because we'll be in full year in, in play, very shortly.
Sure, yes, sir.
The one on the point, that Clay, Clay Park off Maple, is that you, you allowed it all? And we had a tennis court sitting there, we had a basketball goal.
Right, the one by the water tower, right there, behind the bakery and everything. You know, Councilman, I've been by there six, seven, eight times, maybe, and I have never seen anybody there. So, I, I couldn't answer that, you know, I, I haven't seen anybody utilize that area.
Are they using Rosetti Park, isn't that anymore to speak of?
The Rosetti Park?
Yeah, Rosetti Street, Rose Park.
Oh, um-
They got the two little fields right there.
The, uh, Donella, isn't that Donella?
Yeah.
Well, right, the, uh, we haven't really had much of anything going on, I think there were still some road construction going on down there. We were, we were looking at, you know, that being one of our areas of revitalization, but, you know, due to the road construction of everything going on down there, we chose to go, you know, to just kind of utilize Megas and Sabaro as of now. And, you know, if, if it's something that may come to fruition in the future that we can revitalize those two ballparks, then, then we may look at, at doing that as well.
I think Billy Ray has the home, the home run record down there, where you played, Billy Ray?
Who hit a homerun, huh? Who? What, you standing on second base, what were you doing?
All right, we're getting a little unruly here, do we have any more? Do we have any more questions of Mr. Lee?
No, just, I just have one thing, MLK and Joan Tink is usually operated out of sixty-six, forty-nine, so, and we got it in on departmental, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Okay, we can do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. You want to, we have Mr., uh, home run hitter out there, Mr. Allen. Yeah, Mr. Allen, if, uh, if you want to make this team, you gotta be able to catch a ball, right? Do we want to move forward, big Mr. Allen in Public Works, you want to call it a day, we've been here a long time, it's four-thirty. It's up to, up to y'all, whatever your pleasure is. Had enough for the day, or?
Yeah, I know he wants it.
I'm getting the look like, yeah, we've had enough for the day. It doesn't make any difference to me.
Well, you don't want to run through it too quick, you know, you gotta get the homerun ahead and make sure we explain themself.
Okay.
What kind of ball, you hit a golf ball, what'd you hit?
I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right.
Yeah, we want to throw a couple of balls and strikes.
All in favor? It's a six-oh vote, Mr. Glavine's not present. Ooh, I hope so, I'm looking forward to it, next week, yeah. Carrie, if you would, just make a note that our next budget workshop will follow the next council meeting on the twenty-seventh. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.
All right, next week.
Probably stop the bleed anyway. The bathroom, the door shut, hit more. You know, it don't take nothing to bleed.